Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to tonight's City Council Committee of the Whole Policy Discussion on the City of Geneva's Option in Regulating Adult-Use Cannabis Business Establishments. Let the record show that all the aldermen are present. I have some brief opening remarks before we set the stage, or I should say, in helping set the stage. Ladies and gentlemen, to be clear, we are not engaging in a debate tonight about whether recreational cannabis should be legal in Geneva. That decision has been rendered by the General Assembly. Effective January 1st, 2020, recreational cannabis will indeed be legal in all of Illinois under the ramparts of the Illinois Cannabis Regulation and Tax Act. We are, however, interested in discussing the broad regulatory measures granted to the City of Geneva in the Act, which is defined, which will be rather defined, in a presentation by Geneva's administrative intern, Mr. Matt Pasquini. This evening's policy discussion is not a public hearing, as defined by state law or local ordinance. This evening, we are simply having a public meeting, or discussion, if you will. The distinction is important, as the City Council's Committee of the Whole, this committee, is not taking testimony from any of you, as we would normally do so if this were a zoning matter, or some other issue that requires a hearing, per se. Notwithstanding the distinction, this evening's meeting is being conducted under Robert's Rules of Order, and I, as chairman of the meeting, am duty-bound to govern the public meeting accordingly. Tonight's policy discussion will unfold as follows. Geneva's administrative intern, Mr. Matt Pasquini, will make a presentation about the Illinois Cannabis Regulation and Tax Act, and cover with emphasis the elements of the Act which speak to our community's regulatory and taxing authority. Mr. Pasquini's presentation will be posted on the city's website for review and reference as early as practicable tomorrow, September the 24th. Following Mr. Pasquini's presentation, Ms. Dawkins, our city administrator, will offer a few words, and then, I will open up the floor to comments and questions from those of you in the audience. My colleagues and I on the dais ask that you please adhere to the following ground rules concerning public comment. Please direct all comments and questions to me, as chairman. If you pose a question that requires an answer from one of Geneva's professional staff members present, I will ask that staff member to join us at the podium and provide their response accordingly. Please be respectful of your time at the podium. Deliver your remarks or pose your questions straightforwardly and succinctly. Any comments or questions must be germane to the agenda topic. The City of Geneva's Regulatory and Tax Authority, deviating from the pertinent topic, will require me to respectfully and kindly interrupt you and ask that you replace your statement or question just uttered. Granting someone an opportunity to speak a second time will not be permitted unless and until anyone who wishes to speak for the first time is invited to do so. When you are recognized to speak, please make your way to the podium. Upon arrival at the podium, share with us your first and last name, spelling your last name for the record, and should you elect to do so, you are welcome to share your address as well, although you are not required to do so. Similarly, if you represent a particular group or advocacy organization, feel free to share the name of that organization with us as well, although you are not required to do so. Please refrain from any outbursts such as applauding, or, heaven forbid, disparaging any speaker after he or she has finished addressing the committee. Upon conclusion of all comments and questions from the audience, I will open the floor up to the committee for their questions and comments, and the same rules, of course, will apply to the committee. This meeting is being broadcast on Comcast Channel 10 and AT&amp;T Channel 99, and it is being streamed live on the city's website. Should we come close to 10:00 p.m., I will pause and ask the committee's preference as to whether or not to continue, or to continue the meeting to a future date. I ask that you please silence your cellphones, out of respect to those around you. Finally, having determined that all questions and comments from the audience and committee have been shared, I will endeavor to seek consensus from the committee to recommend action by the city's professional staff to either draft an ordinance to, as we've heard so many times before, opt-in, relevant to the six usage elements and taxing authority, or opt-out, as is our prerogative under the Act. Now, just to be clear, no action taken by this committee, no action taken by the committee of the whole, or the city council, or the Plan Commission, the city automatically has opted in. So some sort of action has to be taken. No action has been taken this evening. Again, we're simply seeking consensus to ask staff to prepare some documents for further consideration. If, for example, tonight, this committee decides to opt-out, it is likely that we would have an ordinance opting out as early as Monday, October the 7th. Consensus will be defined, as I interpret, the will of the majority of the committee members present, which is all of us. And again, please note, there is no formal action being taken this evening. Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the committee? It's my pleasure to welcome Mr. Pasquini to the podium. I kindly ask that Mr. Pasquini be afforded the opportunity to get through the entire presentation. And with that said, Matt, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Burns, and thank you to the aldermen of the council, and everyone who's here tonight. Good evening. My name is Matthew Pasquini, and I have been working as an intern in the city administrator's office for just over a year. I am also in the second and final year pursuing a Masters of Public Administration at Northern Illinois University, and expect to earn my degree in May of next year. Over the past couple of months, I've been working to make sense of the Cannabis Regulation and Tax Act, or the CRTA, which was passed on June 25th, 2019. The information I will be sharing tonight is meant to help the council understand what the law says, and the scope of authority given to municipalities to regulate cannabis business establishments. One thing I would like to reiterate is that come January 1st, 2020, the recreational use of marijuana will be legal statewide. As a number of municipalities have been quick to signal their intent to regulate cannabis business establishments, there are new realities the city will have to adapt to, regardless of how we regulate this up-and-coming industry in Geneva. The prospect of, sorry, the prospect of marijuana was first brought to the state in August of 2013, when Governor Pat Quinn signed a bill that enacted the Compassionate Use of Medical Cannabis Act. This established the medical marijuana pilot program, which began sales in 2015, and was expanded by Governor Rauner in 2018. Just less than a year after expansion, Illinois became the first state to legalize the recreational use of marijuana by legislative action. This is noteworthy, because every other state to pass recreational cannabis legislation did so by referendum, and left legislatures rushing to pass bills, whereas Illinois's bill was negotiated with considerably more time than the others, and greater amounts of stakeholder engagement. It was passed by the General Assembly on May 31st of this year, and signed by Governor Pritzker on June 25th. There are a number of components to this new law, but our discussion will focus primarily on the ones that will help guide the council in determining whether or not to regulate adult-use cannabis business establishments in Geneva. I will be going over what the law says about possession, consumption and use, the expansion of cultivation centers and dispensaries, the new types of cannabis business organizations that were established under the CRTA, and taxation. Aside from the CRTA, SB 2023 was passed and signed into law to make permanent the aforementioned medical cannabis program. The bill was mostly passed to ensure that the recreational, sorry, it was passed to ensure that recreational and medical marijuana are separate from one another, and that legislative changes for one don't affect the other. The passage and signing of SB 2023 and its contents have little to no bearing on the discussion for this evening. The implementation of the CRTA began effective immediately. Upon passage, and licensing and agency rulemaking has already commenced, so the first legal sales are ready to begin on January 1st. Consumption will not be legal until legal means to purchase have been established. Because of the medical marijuana pilot program, 20 cultivation centers and 55 dispensaries have already been established. These organizations were given the first claim to early approval licenses, which will ensure there is cannabis available for purchase on January 1st. They have also been able to apply for secondary site licenses that permit the opening of a second location, so they don't have to sell from their existing registered medical dispensary location. This early and quick timeframe has the potential to establish approximately 100 dispensaries across the state for the legal sale of marijuana to adults on January 1st. Beginning next month, in October and up until May 1st, 2020, the state will grant 75 conditional adult-use recreational dispensary licenses that will be distributed throughout the entire state. It is estimated that 47 of those licenses will be reserved for the Chicago-Naperville-Algen area, as defined by the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics. For this slide, it doesn't need too much explaining, but it highlights the timeline of establishing Illinois' cannabis industry over the next couple of years. The number of permits to be distributed for each cannabis-related business is outlined for each year, and I want to draw your attention to January 1st, 2022. This marks the end of the beginning of establishing Illinois' cannabis industry. And when everything is said and done, the state can modify the number of dispensing organization licenses assigned to each region of the state, but cannot issue more than 500 dispensing organization licenses and 150 craft grower licenses. And I'll just leave this up for maybe 30 seconds, so you can take a look and gather what you'd like from it. So, what will be allowed? Regarding the possession of cannabis, it is limited to adults whose age is 21 and up. As for what dispensaries will be able to sell, it includes any cannabis or cannabis-infused products. This includes marijuana leaf, tested derivatives, which are also known as concentrates, and cannabis-infused products. Leaf is what is traditionally associated with marijuana use and smoked. Concentrates are extracted and processed from the marijuana plant itself, and made into a waxy or oil-like substance. And cannabis-infused products include edibles, beverages, tinctures, and other products that are not intended to be inhaled, and are made by infusing concentrates into the desired product. Concerning the consumption and use of cannabis, you can think of alcohol and tobacco licensing, sorry, alcohol and tobacco laws being fused together to create these guidelines. It may only be consumed in private residences, or on the premise of a licensed cannabis business, although even that may be regulated by local authority. When we think about the new cannabis industry, it is easy to get caught up in thinking only about the dispensaries and the customers who buy cannabis products. But this slide will show just how varied the cannabis industry can be. First off, craft growers and cultivation centers are both dedicated to growing marijuana plants. Craft growers are smaller. They can hold up to 5,000 square feet of cannabis space of flowering plants, and are permitted to share the premises with processing organizations, dispensing organizations, and/or infuser organizations. Meanwhile, cultivation centers are larger. They can hold up to 210,000 square feet of canopy space of flowering plants, and will be among the organizations responsible for the cultivation, processing, and transportation of cannabis and cannabis-infused products. Dispensaries are stores that sell cannabis and cannabis-infused products. They may stand alone, or share a premise with craft growers, processors, and/or infusers. Processing organizations set up facilities that are dedicated to extracting the concentrates used to make cannabis-infused products. While there are methods to extract concentrates from cannabis on your own, the processing of cannabis for infused retail products uses more complex and safety-sensitive methods that are best done in controlled settings. Infuser organizations incorporate the concentrates extracted by processing organizations to create edibles, tinctures, oil cartridges, and other cannabis-infused products that will eventually be sold at dispensaries. Infusers are allowed to share the same premises as processors, craft growers, and dispensaries. Finally, the purpose of transporting organizations and testing facilities is rather straightforward. Transporting organizations will be responsible for the transport of cannabis and cannabis-infused products to the aforementioned types of businesses, and testing facilities will be established to test cannabis for potency and contaminants. Under the CRTA, the responsibility of licensing cannabis business establishments is exclusive to the state. The Department of Agriculture is responsible for the licensing and regulation of cultivation centers, craft growers, infusers, processors, and transporting organizations. The Department of Financial and Professional Regulation is responsible for the licensing and regulation of dispensaries. Notably, noncompliance with local zoning is a reason for the denial of licenses, as cannabis business establishments must operate on properly-zoned property, and follow any distance limitations or other guidelines set by local authority. In the next two slides, I'll be reviewing some of the prohibitions enacted by the state. To begin, dispensaries must be at least 1,500 feet away from each other. I also discuss how the regulation of marijuana is similar to tobacco and alcohol. Using cannabis is restricted in public places and on school grounds, and is regulated under the Smoke-Free Illinois Act. Sales to minors and home deliveries are also prohibited. There are also a number of limitations that restrict advertising, youth possession, driving, and safety-sensitive employees. The advertising of cannabis and cannabis-related products is restricted. Medical or health claims, images of cannabis leaf or buds, and imagery that would appeal to minors is prohibited. Other prohibitions include youth possession and consumption, except for medical purposes, and open containers inside motor vehicles, as they must be sealed, odorless, tamper-proof, and reasonably inaccessible to the driver. As for driving under the influence, the law restricts the amount of THC an individual can have in their bloodstream while behind the wheel. And finally, firefighters and police officers who are on duty or on call are restricted from consumption. There are also limitations that extend to the holders of commercial driver's licenses, as they are regulated by federal transit authority guidelines and subject to their The information I have reviewed thus far summarize loose guidelines, rules, and regulations that are outside the control of municipalities, and have been set by the state. I'm now about to go over what powers have been left to the, sorry, left to the municipalities, much of which I'm about to review is important for your consideration should the council regulate cannabis business establishments. The city can predefine the number of establishments allowed within city limits. They can limit the location of future cannabis business establishments in dispensaries, the hours of operation, and whether or not onsite consumption is permitted at cannabis business establishments. The city may also levy a municipal retailer's occupation tax on up to 3% of the gross receipts of the sale of cannabis and related products. The council may also determine to regulate some cannabis businesses and not others. For example, the council may prohibit the establishment of dispensaries, but allow for cultivation centers and/or craft growers, just as an example. Meanwhile, the city cannot unreasonably prohibit home grow under the medical cannabis program, or uses of cannabis that are consistent with the Act. So these are just some of the sources that helped put this presentation together, and I'd like to turn it to Stephanie at this point to continue the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. So the items that we have up on the screen are, again, just to help facilitate the discussion, so you can kind of keep your head around the different types of businesses. And this is the end of our formal presentation, but I would note that we do have our professional staff available, including Assistant City Administrator McCready, Chief Passarelli, Community Development Director DeGroot, and Economic Development Director Timoshenko, I know how to say it, present this evening, so if there are questions that come up relating to their specific areas of expertise, they are here to try to help answer those questions. And certainly, if there are questions that we don't have the answers for, we are more than happy to research those and get back to the council. So at this point, I would turn it over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Without objection, ladies and gentlemen, let's begin with public comment and/or questions, and I'll begin on the south side of the room. Anyone who wishes to speak, just raise your hand, and I'll recognize you. Yes, welcome. Please join us at the podium, and again, your first name and last name, spell your last name, if you so choose. By all means, share your address, but you do not have to.
Sure. Hi, my name is Debbie Kanarowski, K-A-N-A-R-O-W-S-K-I. I've lived in Geneva for the past 28 years at 755 Westfield Course. This is only the third meeting I've attended, and the other two, one was for my daughter for Art for All at City Hall, and a recognition for a teacher. So this is pretty important to me, and the good news is, I think Geneva's been doing a great job. I'm here on behalf of the children, even though all of my children are grown. I understand that while others in the state of Illinois will be selling cannabis, I'm against it being sold here. I'm actually against any business being here with that. We all know that older siblings and friends will be able to purchase, even though there is the age of 21. It will add a much larger burden to our school administration and police. If Geneva approves this, it shows to me that we are more interested in the money to be made than the adverse effect that this will have on our community. We all live here because we know Geneva's special. It's different from other communities, so let's keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from the south side of the room? I'll move to the north side. Anyone on the north side of the room? Yes. Actually, sir, this young lady first, then you? Sorry about that?
Yeah. I'm already liking it, this young lady. I didn't plan on speaking tonight, but I think I am feeling led to. My name is Diane Dargis, D-A-R-G-I-S, whoa, and I'm a teacher's aide. I've been aiding at Western Avenue School for 20 years, and I know the mayor's been at our school a number of times, and the kids love to have him there. And I have to echo the same sentiments as this lady who just came up. Working with the kids for 20 years, seeing them from kindergarten go through the high school, knowing that there's challenges for those kids already, to put this in their face and say, as wise adults, saying, "We feel your choice is fine, that this is okay to do," does not give them that, that control, saying, "The people that are in charge of our community and everything," for them to say that this is okay is not okay. We have a community at Christmas where people run, walk up and down the streets. We have the trick-or-treating that's coming up, and you go, "Well, you can't go into that one, because they have those cute little gummies, but you can't have that." I think there needs to be a whole lot of wisdom behind this, and I know that you've done, I don't even know which alderman is mine. I'm at 2300 Bloomfield Circle, and so I'd like to talk to you. I'm not sure I have anything more specific to say, other than, I am totally against this. I have seen challenges escalate for kids, and I think it starts right here to limit that. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Sir? How are you?
I am doing well. How are you guys today? Well, my name is Scott Ho-Ho, H-O-H-O-L. I do not reside in Geneva, but I am here this evening to offer my services to you all as an individual with intimate knowledge of how this non-patient adult users will be integrated into the Illinois State Traceability System when allowed on January 1st, 2020. I do work in this industry. I'm not going to disclose where and what I do, based on the confidentiality of HIPAA and the IDPH that I have to follow here. But yeah, so, but I am here to offer my services, and to answer any questions, or anything that you guys have this evening, because, like I said, I do have intimate knowledge of how this is going to unveil on January 1st and unroll. And again, I'm not here in any professional capacity, just in a straight educational capacity. I do also have a lot of knowledge in the biology and the history of cannabis as well, so if you have any questions on those topics, I'm more than happy to answer those. Just one point I'd like to make, is that cannabis is already the most regulated product here in the state of Illinois, and after January 1st, 2020, it will continue to be so. Cannabis is completely non-fatal to humans, no matter the dose consumed, unlike a lot of other products we currently allow purchasable for adults. So, again, I'm here tonight to help create an awareness, and to also help with transparency in this, because I know there is a lot of misinformation out there, or things where there's completely not sourced at all, and we don't know what is true and what is not true. So, based on what I can answer, you know, again, through HIPAA and IDPH, I'm more than happy to stand up here and answer those questions for you guys. All right?
Thank you, sir.
You're very welcome.
Good evening. My name is Colin Campbell, 18 South Sixth Street, C-A-M-P-B-E-L-L. I am an addictions counselor, licensed in two states, practiced for over 35 years. Last 10 years of that as a professor of addictions counseling, and director of an addictions counseling degree program at Suffolk County Community College in New York. So I also have some knowledge and background and expertise in this, and am more than willing to work with the city in any way that I can to help. I have one question and one brief statement. The brief statement is that there is some evidence, this is still too new in this country, but there is some evidence that legalization of marijuana, of recreational use, is frequently followed by a decrease in use amongst young people. And the supposition here is that if it's not illegal, it's no fun. So there may be something for you to consider there. The second thing I'd like to ask is, has there been any determination of, or estimation, of the supposed tax revenues that would be gained by the city for this? Thank you.
What's the committee's preference? Do I respond to questions as they come, or do you wish to wait? City Administrator Dawkins, Mr. Campbell's going to respond to your question regarding revenue projections.
And I would say that the revenue projections are all over the board. So we have heard anywhere from, say, $50,000 to $500,000. There was, Cranes had an industry estimate that each dispensary would sell about $20 million annually, so to the city, that would be about $600,000. I know the village of Yorkville just put out, they're going for a sales tax, and they said about $240,000. So it is anyone's guess at this point.
Anyone else? From any part of the room? Yes, sir?
Good evening. Arnie Silvestri, 234 Planters Row in Geneva. I'm here because my family owns a chocolate business on the east-west side, over, off of Gary Lane. Some of you may know, some of you may not. We are a 40,000-square-foot facility over there, and we manufacture chocolates and caramels and caramel apples, and all kinds of stuff, caramel corn, popcorn, cheesecorn, and we sell to major retailers all over the country. Our facility is FDA-approved, we're SQF, which is a Global Food Safety Network-approved, and we currently work with some of the growers in the state of Illinois for medical, and we take our product and send it to them, and then they take it and infuse it. Because the way it's currently done is, the infusing has to be done inside the growers' facility. Obviously, you can see the new set of licenses that are going to be allowed, and part of it is because the growers are going to want to grow, they're not going to have their space taken up with ovens and things to make candies and cookies and stuff. So we are interested in an infuser license, and I know that, you know, that these are separate items, separate issues, you know, you have dispensaries and some of that other stuff, but I just want to make sure that the, that this council knows that there is a business in the community, that we run two shifts. a business in the community, that we run two shifts. Right now, we're running seven days a week, we employ over 200 people, you know, and it could be a big part of our business. We actually already are shipping quite a bit to two different growers, and then they take it and infuse it on their own, but we would like to be considered for an infuser license here, which is, I think, a completely different level than a sales license, and I know that's going to be a struggle for you guys, and thank God I'm not having to make that decision. But, I want to, you know, put the word out there that there is a business, that's a viable business in this community that would, that would, you know, an infuser license would make a difference for us. So, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Silvestri.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
How are you?
Hello. Robert Danek, 208 McKinley. Just a voice of...
D-A-N-I's?
D-A-N-E-K.
E-K. Thank you, sir.
That's okay. Just a voice for restraint. I don't know if there's an ability to do a referendum for the community, but I don't know if that's something that would be considered part of the law. There was a statement about revenue. How about costs? And how about the bleed-over costs from other communities? Because people here are going to be purchasing it, whether it's here or somewhere else. So, it, we need to consider just, not just revenue, but costs. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes?
Is there any answer to that? Any cost projection?
Well, let me, let me, come on up to the podium, sir, Mr. Danek. If I interpret your comment slash statement, the costs are such that...
Public safety.
There you go. Not necessarily quantified and qualified in this type of meeting this evening. I can certainly...
But, some communities have projected revenue.
That's true.
Have there been communities that have projected costs?
That's true. If you expect this committee, or perhaps our police chief, or anyone else to say, "We anticipate 65 arrests based on minors using," we simply can't do that.
No. Okay. Sure.
Thank you, sir.
As long as everyone's aware of that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam? Hi.
Hello. Hi, how are you?
Hi.
My name's Gwen Streitmatter, S-T-R-E-I-T-matter, M-A-T-T-E-R. Excuse my shirt, I just wasn't planning on speaking tonight. Just woke up this morning, it was Monday, and I just kind of wanted to be like a ray of sunshine, so, excuse my dinosaur shirt at the City Hall meeting. I just guess I just wanted to say I'm part...
This is being broadcast worldwide, by the way.
Oh, all right. Perfect. Lovely. So, I'm part of the dare generation. Again, you wouldn't guess, but I'm almost 35, based on my shirt. So, I grew up with literally videos of syringes and joints, like chasing kids down alleys, you know? And that, again, I'm almost 35, never once in my life have I been, someone tried to trick me into, like, eating gummies or brownies, or like, snuck a joint to me. That's not how it works. Just like, things cost money, no one's going to be trying, taking something they paid money for, and just distributing it to everyone, and sneaking it to them doesn't really make a lot of sense. I don't know. Like I said, I just, I feel like I've, I actually used to be a teacher as well. I taught eighth grade and fourth grade and second grade, and, so, I mean, you see a lot of kids, like someone said, you know, different grades, and the problems are there regardless, and I think there is a lot to, when something isn't exciting, and it's not taboo, and you have to sneak around and do things. Like, kids don't want to be doing something that their parent would go down to a store and buy. It's not as exciting, it's not as cool. Are you going to have kids who get a hold of things? I mean, obviously, kids sneak into liquor cabinets, and they always have, but I think when you take a lot of that excitement out, it's just something else that you buy at a store, and it's not a big deal anymore, so, that's about it.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Yes, sir. Welcome.
Thank you, sir. All right. My name is Tim Keskey. I live at 765 Westfield Course. I'm also a police officer, so I wanted to comment on the cannabis legalization. I just want to make everybody aware that this cannabis that's being sold today is a lot more potent than it was back in the 60s and 80s. Back in the 60s and 80s, you had a THC content of about 2%, okay? Nowadays, we're at about 25 to 30% in plant material, and you're looking at about, up to 80 to 90% in concentrate. There's a lot of science that's still going on with the higher concentrate stuff, but early indication from what I've seen, and what we've been seeing in training, says that it doesn't look good. So, in my opinion, the state did a really bad job on regulating THC content, and the science is still ongoing with all that types of stuff. Also, I do know for a fact, I know I missed the first half of the meeting, I apologize, I came late, but from a law enforcement perspective, at least we're, in my area, in Cook County anyways, where I work, we're behind the ball a little bit on training officers, on drug DUIs. I mean, we're behind the ball. People are, we're trying to catch up, we're trying to catch up. In fact, the Illinois Chiefs of Police Association, even if you go to their website, they've commented on how fast the legislator in Illinois went, and they should have slowed down. And that was also the opinion of the NAACP. So, you have lots of organizations statewide that think that we're moving too fast, and I do believe that if the city chooses to opt-out now, they can always opt-in later. I don't, I don't think that that's such a bad thing. You know, what's the rush? All these other states, I know California for sure, I believe the percentage was about 70% of the towns opted out. I could be reversing those, it's 70/30. But, there were some significant amount of towns that opted out at the beginning. So, I would just ask that we look at the, the health impacts that it's going to have on our city, that, and also traffic. One more thing, I forgot, I wanted to bring up, National High Rate Transportation Safety Administration has said that the past seven years, the amount of cannabis that they're finding, I'm sorry, the amount of people who are being found to have cannabis in their system that were fatally injured as drivers is going up. So, I think we're seeing a lot of red flags, and I think to be safe, Geneva should opt-out maybe for a year or two, see how things go, and then we can always revisit the discussion a little bit later. So, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Evening, sir.
My name is Scott Painter, P-A-I-N-T-E-R, reside at 0N540 Wellington Court, Geneva. I really don't know where to start with this. I've sort of been waiting to see this moment happen since probably 1986, which is the first time I ever indulged in the topic that we're talking about tonight. I've got a bachelor's in physics, mathematics minor, I've designed parts that have gone on the Mars Rover, the landing structure, the first ones that successfully landed on the planet. I've worked at SpaceX. That was the only company in my entire engineering career that did not have a pre-employment drug test. But, anyway, what I'm saying is, like, I've heard a lot of concern around here from people worried about what, what this product's going to do to the community and everything, and I don't know, I'm sort of trembling right now, because I'm sort of excited about being up here and able to, able to talk about it, but I don't think the matter is whether it's should be allowed or shouldn't be allowed. You made that very clear at the beginning, that the law is that it's going to be allowed for everybody in the state regardless. The question is, does Geneva want to be involved in the revenue side of things by providing it here? And if we don't, somebody also mentioned, if we don't sell it in Geneva, Elburn's already done it, already approved it. St. Charles has. Batavia might be next, West Chicago. Chances are, it's already in the homes of people in this room right now, whether they know it or not, and it will find its way back into the community. Now, whether Geneva wants to profit off of that, or they want to let that go, that's up to all the distinguished members of this staff right here. But, to, to echo, or to, I guess, to talk to the point the gentleman just made regarding the opt-out, opt-in thing, I'm sorry, I can't remember the intern's name, is it Matthew?
Yes, sir.
He made a point, and he called attention to it, that there are only going to be a certain number of licenses that are available, and there is the risk that once, once that period goes by, if we don't opt-in now, that we might not be able to do it. But, anyway, thanks for your time. I hope you guys make the right decision, and...
Yes, sir.
I wouldn't want to be in your shoes, because I know the public out there is going to be...
Anyone else? Anyone at all?
Yes, I have one more question.
Does anyone else wish to speak prior to me recognizing this young lady for a second The offer was made, no takers. Madam?
Just one quick question. Well, you're, do I have to name my name again?
No, we've got a picture of you on TV.
Oh, awesome. Hi, everybody.
We know you're an aide at Western Avenue, so we know...
Thanks for that. Okay. I'm just wondering if the committee has at all looked at the data that has been collected since Colorado went on legalized recreational marijuana. My daughter lives out there, and it has become a problem, you know, because the percentages are greater in all areas that you don't want them to be greater. So, I think that's in our best interest to look at that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
My name's Mike Epps, 126 Grant Avenue, Geneva. I just, I guess I have a question. Mr. Arnie here, can you, as far as you know, have a infuser license without having to do any other licenses, or do you have to open it all up?
No, we can actually pick and choose, as it were...
Oh, okay.
...which we are most amenable to.
So, you can just do infuser and not the other ones?
All six or seven, if you will, or it could be just three of the seven, it could be two of the, it could be zero.
Okay.
Yeah, so, it could be, exactly, so...
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? One moment, Mr. T, anyone else wish to speak before I recognize the gentleman again? Man, this is too easy. Yes, sir. Welcome back.
One more thing I wanted to bring up, just in regards to kids, I know, I recall somebody saying how, you know, it wouldn't be cool to do it if it was legalized. Well, I kind of feel like sometimes some of this stuff is kind of geared towards children a little bit, because if you look up the Zenleaf dispensary, they have a menu, and you can look up these menus on an app. So, I know, I don't know if there was any talk earlier about the regulation of advertisements.
Yes, there was. Extensive review by Mr. Pasquini in his presentation.
Awesome.
And I also attended the St. Charles zoning meeting, one that message is also raised by several in the audience.
So, you can actually go on a web, an app. It's called Weed Maps, if you want to look it up or download it. And what you can do, and anybody can do this, I mean, you can download this app, go on the app, and you can look and see what types of cannabis they sell, okay? And I have, I looked up a few of the products that they sell on here. I mean, you got stuff being called Deep Thoughts, Lemon Cake, Sunny D, Sour Watermelon.
Mr. Keskey, I'm going to, I'm going to cut you off right there respectfully.
Sure.
That information is certainly available to the council with respect to their own research.
Oh, okay.
I just don't want to use our time tonight to call out a particular business, nor do I want to talk about naming of products that is, for all practical purposes, still legal to do. Obviously, I think you have an opinion that some of those names are perhaps a little bit slanted toward the younger audience, but...
Oh, I respect that.
The state regulates that, so not, it would not be a community issue to regulate the naming of a product.
Okay.
Just like we could not hop over to one of our craft brewers and say, you know, you can't, you can't call that Richard Marx's favorite ale. That's not a good idea, so...
Gotcha. Okay.
Which I know is not, but nevertheless.
All right.
Forgive me for the interruption.
No, no, no worries. Yeah, and then, yeah, the, the only thing that, yeah, that I would say, that I would like to close with is that, that the, even the, as far as our youth goes, as far as our kids go, even the Surgeon General, most recently, within the past, I believe, month, you know, they put out a statement, you know, saying that marijuana's increasingly widespread availability in multiple and high potent forms, coupled with a false and dangerous perception of safety among youth merits a nationwide action to call. So, I just think as a community that we just need to be cognizant of that, that's all. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the audience? Before I recognize you a second time, anyone who has not yet had a chance to speak, wish to do so, or ask a question? Welcome back, Scott. You know, you in the back row should have your Fitbit on, because it's like, you know...
Yeah, that's another story. But, I dropped 90 pounds in like four months, so that was pretty cool.
Congratulations.
And, thanks. And I was hungry from certain impacts.
And congratulations again.
Anyway, just to address...
Almost said begermaine, but that was too obvious, so, good.
Just to, just to address another thing that I totally forgot to mention at the beginning is, the discussion, I understand where he's coming from with regards to the danger of the community and all that. Again, it's not about that, it's already been legalized, but if you look at, there have been fatalities lately in the news regarding the vapor, vape pens and all that, and it's been, I mean, they've traced it down to the people that were doing it, and it was due to people acting outside of the regulatory system. I think it was just kids cutting it in their own house or whatever, they were not regular, they're selling it, it was black market stuff. I've also lived in states that have had both recreational and medicinal products, and I can tell you from a consumer of the product, both on the black market, medicinally and recreationally, that it's way, way less stress and way, like, more enjoyable as a consumer to be able to go to a store rather than have to go and lurk around, like, your buddy's house, and not even your buddy, just somebody that you can get the stuff through. And you know, I mean, after years and years of doing it, you can tell whether it's been tainted or not, but to have the regulation in the industry and also have the city of Geneva stand behind it and say, "Hey, look, we know it's going to be out here, but we want it to be a safe, regulated environment, rather than let the black market people continue to thrive in there. One, taking tax dollars away, and two, the potential for harm to others." I don't know. I'm just trying to, that's one important point I wanted to bring up, is that we have the opportunity here to provide safe, as debatable as safe is in this topic, you know, product to the people of the city in Geneva, and, like I said, it's, I think that's way better way than just leave it on the black market. That's about it. Thanks.
Thank you. Last chance, anyone in the audience, question or comment? If not, we're going to hop to our friends that are on the committee and on the dais. Oh, yes, forgive me. Hi.
Lauren Byron, B-I-R-O-N, live here in Geneva. I only came up, actually, because you made a comment about the Fitbit, and my heart rate is about 160, just thinking about coming up here, but, we're here, we'll do it.
We do have an AED over in the corner, in case...
You may need to use it, frankly. I just wanted to come up and echo some things that a few people have said, like, shout out to my dare friend in the back, and also Captain SpaceX. I just wanted to voice that I'm kind of on the same team. This is coming to Geneva, it's going to be in your neighborhood one way or another. I think it would be nice to see Geneva be kind of forward-leaning. This is something that is legal in the state, it's coming here, and it seems silly to me that we wouldn't take advantage of having this opportunity. Some of the concerns from people about, they kind of sound to me like people who, back in the day, didn't think that alcohol was a good idea, and people shouldn't be able to come purchase it. There are a lot of parallels, right? But, these are grown adults, this is a legal substance, they're able to purchase it. It would be nice if Geneva supported people exercising that right. Thanks.
Anyone else? From the dais. From the dais, questions or comments regarding the presentation, questions or comments for either professional staff members who are present this evening or just general queries regarding the act itself? Alderman Ruby, then Alderman Clements?
Thank you. I'm just, on the infuser topic, if, for example, the Chocolate Shop was given the infuser license, then where would they be able to sell that product, the infused product?
The short answer is no. Mr. Pasquini, do you want to explain, based on your knowledge of that, come up to the podium, of course?
If you don't know the answer.
And if you don't know the answer, but I believe the short answer is no.
I know the short answer, but someone else may know it longer.
Yeah, the short answer is no.
Infusers may only sell or distribute to a dispensing organization.
Right. We could not walk over to Carousel Candy and enjoy a chocolate bar, as it were.
You can have a chocolate bar. No problem. Not the other time.
All right, so the infuser license only allows them to make the product, not sell it?
Distribute it to a dispensing.
Sell it, yeah. Sell it and distribute it to...
Right, not a retail.
Not a retail option, exactly.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Alderman Clements, then Alderman Bruno.
Thank you, Chair. So is it, is it, would the committee agree that we're not really going to have any impact on consumption of this product regardless of where we go with this? You know, as was already outlined in the presentation, this is a legal product in the state as of January first, so we're not debating whether or not people can use it here in Geneva. We're just debating whether or not we're going to allow it sale or transportation companies or whatever of these seven different options. So I haven't seen anything, I don't, it proves to me that we're going to have any impact on consumption, so what are we really debating? Are we debating the morality of using this product? What's the question? You know, looking at this information here from Colorado, I have looked at that before, but I'm pulling some of it up now because it is a pretty relevant area to look. Colorado Division of Criminal Justice published a report on impacts of marijuana legalization in Colorado, and one of the biggest concerns I'm hearing is about children, which is a very valid concern. I'm just going to look, read off some of these statistics that are on here. The youth marijuana rate reported for the 2015-2016 school year was at nine point one percent, was the lowest it had been since 2007, 2008. The proportion of high school students reporting using marijuana ever in their lifetime or reporting past thirty-day use remains statistically unchanged from 2005 to 2017. The proportion of students trying marijuana before age thirteen went down from nine point two percent in 2015 to six point five percent in 2017. And as many of us probably suspect, the most common substance abuse reporting problem was alcohol, which is abundantly available in Geneva. So I guess, if we're not going to alter the, the consumption habits and we're talking about a legal product, what are we debating?
Alderman Bruno.
Thank you, Mayor. That's one of my lines, as Mr. Clements brought up, so I won't repeat that, but I am...
Under committee rules, you are permitted to say ditto?
Move to ditto. The, one thing that's, it's interesting is the, the banking aspect. This is, am I right in thinking this is still a cash business?
So what I've been told and what we've learned from the various seminars we've been attending, that there are some, state banks, as long as it's not a federal bank, state banks can work with these businesses to secure, so. So most, most, it is a cash business. Most of these dispensaries have ATMs located right within their facility so that people get the cash. They know exactly what their transaction amount is. They get the cash right there and they turn it over. Armored trucks pick it up, but they're, they're not like hiding their money in their mattresses.
And the one thing I think still isn't mature, not that it has a bearing on the licensing, is field testing for driving under the influence. And I did have a conversation, you know, Chief Passarelli was in the room. I know there are things coming online with a, at a price tag, so I expect that market will...
And I could let Chief address it too, but from what I understand also, there are, there are testing, but nothing's been court-approved to use in a court of law. So, but again, Chief, if you want to add anything or...
No, that's exactly correct. There is no...
Chief, before you continue, any comments? Join us at the podium, sir, if I could trouble you, because you've got, according to my watch, we've got thirty-one people tuning in.
Alderman Bruno is correct. There is no standard field sobriety testing device like a portable breath test that's been approved to use in court or, there are some in development right now, but from what I'm seeing, the price tag is pretty cost prohibitive at this point, but nothing out there yet.
And the, what was the other? Had to do with enforcement. Oh, the, my understanding is this is, whereas we can control and sting and check enforcement with alcohol and tobacco locally, we do not have that authority with this. This is entirely state...
That's correct. So right now, it's currently only licensed by the state, but it's also highly regulated by the state. They come in, they do the inspections, they do the stings. The dispensaries are required to have video capabilities to the point that they have to know, be able to read every license plate in a parking lot. They have to have facial recognition technology, they have to archive that stuff. So yes, we don't have the authority. It's one of the things we've been asking, perhaps in the veto session, to give cities licensing authorities so that we would have the ability to do stings and that kind of thing, but right now it's solely to the state.
So to, with, with that, I'll just echo Alderman Clements. What we're talking about here is licensing a legal product. It will not affect consumption within the city. It will not impact health hazards, whether it's DUIs, I mean, if they buy it in St. Charles, they could still crash in or drive it four miles an hour in, in Geneva. If we wanted to make a, as you alluded, if you, we wanted to make a moral point on this, which we are not discussing here tonight, then it's, it would be hypocritical if we were to not make that same point on nicotine, which is highly, highly addictive with clear and well-documented health, health risks. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Clements has been asked to be recognized a second time. Is there anyone who wishes to speak first prior to me recognizing? Mr. Clements? Mr. Clements?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Regarding the, the money, are there, and I can't recall, are there restrictions to those funds that we receive from the sale of...
So the, as far as what the city receives?
Yeah.
No, so there are no restrictions. The city council can impose their, their own restrictions. So if the city council wanted to say X percent of revenue derived from this sales tax...
Yeah, that's, of course, down the road, depending on how an ordinance is constructed.
Sure.
Yeah, but...
So yeah, so we would have full authority over that.
It's not, okay, it's not coming to us restricted.
Now, with, with the, but let me just say, the taxing that the state is doing on the product to begin with, they have restrictions and they have earmarked certain percentages for various social problems, social programs.
Thank you.
Alderman Malata, then Alderman Kilburg.
So Alderman Clements' question about what is it we're, we're discussing? We're not discussing whether or not marijuana is or should be legal. That's already been decided by the state. Whatever decision we make is not going to affect consumption. I agree with that, but I think that what we are talking about is whether or not Geneva, whether or not the sale of marijuana is consistent with the character Geneva is striving towards. Since I've been on the council, we've debated the use of tobacco products. I think we were forward-leaning in our discussion about whether or not smoking should be prohibited in public places. We've had lengthy discussions about other interesting businesses. I'll just leave it at that. But I will say, none of these interesting businesses can be found in downtown Geneva or some of them anywhere else in Geneva. So we're being asked to consider something new. The question we should be asking ourselves is, what does it do for Geneva? What does it do for us if we approve it? In part, it maybe enhances our revenue position, but it also positions us as a community that perhaps puts revenue ahead of the social aspects of what we're approving. Question about whether or not legalization will decrease the excitement about the use of the product? I don't know. Alcohol's legal and I'm pretty sure we all know that underage drinking takes place. So I don't see legalization as curbing the use any more than I see legalization of alcohol curbing its use. I'm confused a little bit by some of this, and maybe this gets into legalization aspects, but Arnie's comment about you can buy a candy bar, but not the other kind of candy bar. Encountered these gummies, I'll just say it that way, and they look just like regular gummies and things like that. So the question of cost, I can't speak to the question of cost, but I can't speak to the question of challenges that we're gonna, everybody's gonna face from this legalization. Comments that I heard tonight, I think the most telling in my mind is, what's the rush? Yes, they're talking about a limited number of licenses. I don't know if the demand is there. I think that the license, number of licenses will go up. We had a limited number of liquor licenses. It's larger than it was when I joined the council. For those of you who are here hoping and praying and have been since nineteen eighty-six that this gets approved, if we don't approve it, you gotta drive five minutes to get it. So what's the difference? What it says to me, though, is that, is that Geneva is attempting to embrace a certain type of character and what we need to decide is whether or not this type of business is consistent with that character. Question for you, I tried to find this but couldn't tell in the beginning. When the riverboats opened, was, did Geneva have a position on the use of riverboat revenue?
No, in fact, we were never asked that. However, I will say this, that when the city of Geneva received riverboat grant revenue, the votes to accept that grant revenue were never unanimous.
Thanks. So anyway, that's, to me, the question that we're looking at.
Alderman Kilburg. Your microphone, sir?
I was wondering if staff could give some information as it relates to the Illinois Municipal League and what their stance is currently on this? Or where, what their opinion is? And, and I know that they're looking at the need for trailer legislation and what would be some of the elements of the trailer legislation that the Illinois Municipal League feels to be critical?
So some of the, so the Municipal League, per se, hasn't taken a position. They provide the, the research and the materials to help us make our decision. As far as the trailer bill, one of the things is, is that if you do impose a municipal sales tax, currently it's not effective until September first of 2020, but yet people will be selling it January one. So one of the trailer bills would be to move that date to January one. So sales tax could be collected on day one instead of not until September first. The other one is, what I mentioned earlier, is the licensing aspect, giving local municipalities the authority to license and be able to regulate it in that manner. Those are the two main issues on the trailer bill. There's also some cleanup. Currently, the, the Medical Act requires distances from schools and churches and that kind of thing. The Recreational Act, that wasn't put in there. The only, the only distance requirement is that it can't be more than fifteen hundred feet from another dispensary. Now, that's not to say, but that's not to say that the city council can't put those restrictions in. There's just not that restriction in the law.
The other point, and it's unrelated to this, but there were comments that were made in regard to vaping and the fact that vaping until recently was legal for minors or those under twenty-one. And only recently have we enacted legislation that allows, or that does not allow anyone under twenty-one to vape. It's, it's been identified as one of the major problems in our high schools across the United States. And here's a case of what was once legal, it required legislation to make it illegal. And the fact that the accelerated use of the, of vaping and the introduction of, of, I guess, habit has created a number of problems in our society, I think. And it would appear that this could be a transition to tobacco and, and... I was around when the Surgeon General first told us that tobacco wasn't safe and they required to identify it on packaging. And it took fifty years to, to, to make the public aware to where we saw a dramatic decrease in tobacco use. I'm just wondering if this introduction of a stimulant is going to, to complicate the efforts of the last fifty years to, to build awareness as it relates to the dangers of tobacco use.
Thank you. Alderman Caven, then Swanson.
Thank you. You know, I, I agree with a lot of the comments that have been made by people in the crowd, as well as some have already been, been given by the council. I mean, this is going to be legal in the state. It is going to be here. You know, there may be additional challenges for police and, and all those things are, all those things are true. You know, we discussed a little bit about how, how much revenue there actually is there at this point in time. It's still a little bit of, still a little bit of an unknown. You know, I, I guess for me, I sort of share the thought process of, you know, what is really the rush a little bit? I mean, I think that this has moved through the state of Illinois pretty quickly. I think it would be more of my opinion to take more of a wait-and-see approach. I think this is always something that could be revisited at a later time. I, I know that one of the points that was in, in the presentation that we saw this evening, it shows that there was a, a max out of five hundred, but if this turns out to be something that is really great for so many different communities and for the state as a whole, I would definitely, I would make the assumption that at some point in time, there will be more than five hundred licenses allowed if this is something that turns out to be a huge boon financially to a lot of these different communities. So I, I guess from my perspective, I, I know we also discussed a little bit of, you know, the, the image of our, the image of our community. And again, you can debate that back and forth. It's something that's going to be legal and everybody's, you know, certainly welcome to have their own opinion. I guess in my mind, I think that maybe going a little bit slower and maybe tabling this for this point in time, or not tabling, but, you know, opting out, that doesn't mean that the city wouldn't have the opportunity later on, once some of these other questions that we have, we have evidence from some of the surrounding communities that may or may not participate or just from in our own state as a general. So, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Swanson?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with many of the statements that have been made tonight. However, I, I do look at the financial impact on Geneva. One of the, two of the questions that I'm asked most frequently are, how are you going to reduce my taxes? And what are you going to do to develop empty space in Geneva? And, and it seems that this does address both of those. Whether or not you agree with the product that's being sold, it does do that. I also agree with what Alderman Clements mentioned about what are we addressing here? It is legal and we're not making a moral judgment. And if we were making a moral judgment, how do we reconcile that in the last year, we have approved three different new alcohol venues downtown? But then we're going to say, but we're not going to allow any marijuana venues in the city of Geneva, even though it's another legal product that is offered statewide. So I think there is an opportunity cost. If we were to say no and opt out now, we cannot assume... If we were to say no and opt out now, we cannot assume that there will be more than 500 licenses at some point. We don't know that. And if, if Geneva is not getting that license someday because of that, we'd be hitting ourselves on the head. What are, what are we waiting for? We're not going to stop the change. We're not going to keep people from driving through Geneva who are impaired by not allowing it. So, if, if we're not changing behavior, we also are, we can control where we put it in Geneva. It doesn't have to be at the corner of Third and State. We can control through zoning where we want to locate it. So, I think there are ways that we can control where it is and, and benefit financially from a legal product in the state. So, I, I, I support moving forward with not opting out. Thank you.
Alderman Bruno has been asked, as has Caven, as has Clemens. Alderman McGowan, the floor is yours, and then I'll ask Alderman Burghardt or Marx if they wish to speak.
Thank you. I love when I get a chance to do that. Sorry, guys, you're gonna have to wait. I had a couple of questions, and Stephanie, as you probably know, I emailed you earlier today. Some of them have already been answered in the course of this discussion, but the first one, of course, was how much tax revenue for the city of Geneva is expected to be generated per year based on current examples and trends for each medical, or sorry, for each dispensary, if we approve such a dispensary? And you answered that, you said, the numbers are so uncertain right now, but it's anywhere between 50 to, I heard you say, 600,000 per year, per dispensary. So, those are some healthy numbers. What, what sticks in my mind is that we, I feel that we're still kind of catching up to where we want the city to be in light of the economic recession that was about 10 years ago. We just approved some $500,000 to repaint the water tower. That was well overdue, from what I remember, based on, you know, the recommended time that you should have your water tower repaired and painted. And I know our fleet was totally out of date. We're still trying to catch up and have safe, reliable vehicles for various departments and city workers. So, and we hear talk all the time in national news about any number of, like, looming economic recessions that could happen anytime. So, I do feel it's important to, as Alderman Swanson was saying just now, take advantage of this as a financial opportunity and ensure that we are able to capture those tax dollars in our own town, and not just have everyone from Geneva, for example, who might be interested in partaking in some recreational, legal marijuana, to go next door to St. Charles or Elburn or anywhere else that's, you know, close by, and, and we're, we're losing all of that business. And I believe there would be some, like, I guess, additional business, too, if someone were to come here, so, to, to purchase recreational marijuana. And I had a question about tourism, and I'm kind of jumping ahead in my list of questions, but, well, okay, I'll just read that one. Hang on a second. I can find it. But what I wanted to know is, like, are, is it expected from an economic development standpoint that people would come to a town like Geneva, knowing that there's a dispensary here, and then stay for dinner, or go shopping, or attend a festival, or anything like that? And would that create additional business opportunity?
So, I'm gonna actually recognize our Economic Development Director since, again, she's here. I pushed it, it didn't go on, sorry. She's here, so I'd like, I'd like her to address it.
I think in my opinion, the answer is yes. I think it would be a regional attraction because of the way that the facilities will be located. I don't think people will come probably nationally, but sure, it's another, it would be another reason to come to Geneva to enjoy our offerings here.
Okay, and actually, Kathleen, while you're up there, I had another question for you, if I may. And it was, in general, and just so that I can hear and so that everyone can hear, from an economic development standpoint, what is the benefit to Geneva by allowing dispensaries? I mean, like, what, in a nutshell, or like, what are some of the things that are being discussed in your industry, your, you know, your professionals?
Well, it's definitely a, you know, a growth industry. You don't know all the benefits yet. You know, you've heard from one business person, you didn't realize that was happening, but you don't know who else it may impact, and it's a, it's a growing industry which is being provided to us by the state of Illinois as an opportunity. It's interesting because states often get ranked on opportunities, and Illinois is usually at the very low end of the spectrum. The last time I looked, we were number 45 in the states. So, I think that because a decision has been made at the state level to provide this industry as a growth industry for Illinois, there's a lot of opportunities that may or may not come to communities, depending on how things build from the, the industry. But there's also other benefits with respect to the utilities. You know, we, we talk a lot about growing utilities. You have the potential for a lot of electric and water usage. You know, we've already talked about taxation, potential for taxation. You have reuse of buildings and vacancy absorption. You definitely have a shift in industry with retail sales changing and the city being so dependent upon retail sales, and things are moving toward entertainment uses. People want to do more while they're here. This would be another thing to do while you're here in Geneva, speaking to regional tourism. I think that you've got, you know, the space regulations that are built into the law that will prevent proliferation. So, that also provides opportunities to, to be different and to have an industry that might not be somewhere right next door.
Okay, and thank you. I'm glad you mentioned what you did about vacant commercial space, which Geneva has a fair amount of. So, both in our bustling downtown area and also, I guess, in the industrial areas that we currently have. But we also are planning the whole southeast industrial corridor, and for someone, and this is something, I guess, I should have known, but I didn't until recently, that because marijuana is still a federal, federally regulated substance, nothing can cross state lines. I guess I was under the false assumption that medical dispensaries in Illinois were purchasing high-quality products from Colorado, and I guess that's sort of a misunderstanding that I had. So, everything has to be, everything that is sold in Illinois medical dispensaries now is grown here in the state. So, the, the entire economy of this new product or market is all contained within Illinois. So, all of the new jobs are Illinois jobs. All of the, all of the revenue stays in Illinois. Just, it's such a, I think it's such a great opportunity, and I know there's, I hate to use the word great, because I know that there's kind of like a stigma, and there's a lot of opposition to the fact that this is a recreational drug. But Illinois is struggling, and so many people complain, they love to complain about how horrible the economy is here, and I see this as a solution in many ways. And so, I do think that we, as a council, should consider the fact that we have this plan, in our strategic plan, to develop our southeast industrial corridor, which is going on, and I feel that this would be, that location would be very attractive to people in the industry who are looking for space for any of those things that are listed there, processing locations, testing facilities, et cetera. It's just, it's an option. I'm not saying that that's a given, but it's just an option. My personal stance on allowing for recreational marijuana, I am in favor of it because, and I don't think it would take away from Geneva's character at all. We are known for our many fine establishments that sell alcohol, from pure liquor stores right in our downtown, to places that are on Third Street that sample wine every day of the year that they're open, to all of our restaurants. We just had a very, another very successful Festival of the Vine Weekend that is a wine-drinking We have a beer festival coming up, I believe, this fall. Isn't it Festival of the Funk or something? That's coming up, and I received an email from the Geneva Chamber. There's a fundraiser going on right now to raise money for breast cancer awareness, and they're encouraging people, patrons, to purchase glasses of rosé, and a percentage of every glass of rosé purchased is, is used for fundraising. So, alcohol consumption is front and center. All of the kids see it, and I feel that anyone who feel, anyone who thinks that we should opt out of allowing marijuana dispensaries should then work on revoking all of the liquor licenses, and let's make this a dry town, because I don't really see a lot of distinction between one type of recreational drug and another. You have to teach your children about right from wrong, and for each family, that's a personal decision, and I know it's a burden, the, the drug use in the schools is a burden on the school district. It's a difficult thing for the police department, and it affects a lot of families. I understand that, but marijuana is already being used in, in our town, and I think that, I, I agree with the other sentiments that were expressed earlier, that it's better to allow for some legal options and to regulate and to capture those tax dollars. So, I do have a couple other things, but I may hold off on my comments. I'll let a couple others speak, and then I may raise my hand again. Thank you.
Several others have asked to be recognized a second time. Does Alderman Burghardt or Marx wish to speak or ask any questions? Okay. Okay. According to my notes, folks, first hand up, Bruno, then Caven, then Clemens.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to echo another comment at the council in terms of the, the character that Geneva's trying to go after. What we're talking about here is a, is a qualitative decision. We are, we aren't. If, if we do decide to pick and choose those licenses, we still have to make the qualitative decision as to how we do that, where we do that. If I had to roll the dice, I'd say no one would license a dispensary on Third Street. Just taking a guess. Alderman McGowan brought up the, the issue of stigma. Things certainly do change. I remember lengthy discussion over tattoos used to be, you know, biker gangs and convicts. Now, it's yoga teachers and moms and, and the rest of it. And to, and I have to use this again, to Captain SpaceX. I just, I, thanks, thanks for that. That's good. But Mr. Painter, I should mention my history. This is many, many years ago, but I was not an infrequent user of the substance, and at the time, I was, you know, designing multinational computer networks. You know, it's, I, I couldn't do that with, with a lot of other imbibing, but times change, and I don't see that we can positively impact any negative aspects by, by sitting on the sidelines here. Thanks.
Alderman Caven?
Thank you. No, I mean, I think that some of the other Aldermen definitely make some good points, and I acknowledge the fact that, you know, there is potential recession, you know, maybe coming ahead, and, and listen, it's not like I, I feel like I don't want to collect the additional tax dollars, and that is an extra revenue stream. As far as looking at that list up there, you know, I'm talking more about specifically the dispensers. I mean, if you had, you know, say, somebody who owns a business that has something that they're able to still do in regards to the southeast, you know, master plan, if there was, if there was some facility that wanted to be out there and it still wasn't being sold, but it created jobs and revenue in manufacturing, I'm not talking about anything like that. However, the one thing that Alderman Swanson brought up, you know, yes, we did approve, you know, liquor licenses, or there have been liquor licenses approved over this past year, but right or wrong, marijuana wasn't made legal until this upcoming January 1st, and alcohol's been legal for a long time. So, I think that's at least, I think that's at least a, you know, a distinction. One other thing that I would add is, you know, Alderman Bruno, if there isn't a stigma, it wouldn't be a problem, then I don't know why you wouldn't propose that it be on Third Street. That's where majority of the traffic is, and I know that that's a different discussion as far as where we want this to be, but if that's really, if that's really what you're looking for, then I don't know why you wouldn't put it front and center. That's where we have people walking through all the time. I don't know if Chief Passarelli would be able to answer this or not, but, you know, if it winds up being approved and we want to put it in more industrial areas, okay, so you're in, you have it in some industrial area, and I don't know the exact hours of operation, but if you, if you put it in that industrial area, is that kind of off the beaten path where police would normally patrol in the evening when it's later, when we have limited amount of officers that are on? I don't know. Those are a little bit more rhetorical questions, but those are additional things that I think about. And in regards to, in regards to the income and the tax dollars, like I said, I, I certainly don't argue that point, and I think it's very valid, and I think it's something that should be considered, but I think then it's also fair to point out, and I don't know how many people were on this council at that point in time, but if it was only about tax dollars, I think that we would probably have gaming machines, because gambling is legal in the state of Illinois as well. But to my understanding, that's something that we haven't wanted to have in Geneva. So, again, I'm not here to debate or say, you know, a passed decision like that, but if it's technically just about that, then there's no reason why we don't have those here either, because that would be a source of revenue for the city. I guess is what I would, would add at this point in time. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Clemens, Alderman Maladra, and then Bruno for the 44th time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'm teasing you, man.
So, a lot of, a lot of good points being raised by everybody tonight. I think it's probably obvious, I, I am leaning in the direction of opting in and having that drafted up. It, it seems to me that it would, it would be a bad idea to delay this conversation under the auspices of learning more and seeing how things unfold. It, it, it seems that when governments do that, they tend to make the decisions harder. This will not be easier for us a year from now, two years from now. I think it will be just as difficult, if not more difficult, and we might have fewer options at that point in how we lay out our plans. With all of the, the details of how this would work, those are aspects that we'll still have to iron out well past this point. This is just a yes or no of whether or not we go in. All the planning and zoning, all of that will come down the line, so we would have a lot of opportunity to hash out those concerns. And this isn't just about revenue. I, I think the economic impact will, at the very worst, be a small net positive. At best, it could be a significant net positive, but it's not just about that. I mean, we talk about character. You know, I, I'd like to be on record and say that I don't think that somebody who uses marijuana is of any more poor moral character than somebody who gets a drink at Penrose. And, you know, I, I'm happy to say that my community wants you to drink a beer at Penrose. Like, I, I don't view those people as being of poor moral quality, and, you know, I've enough, I'm not extremely old, but I'm old enough to have enough life experience and know enough people that they're not, they're not of poor moral character. So, I, again, I don't really understand where that's coming from. Like, we, we're trying to keep out this horde of, of, of bad people, or that, with...
Alderman Maladra, wait.
I'm not saying that's what you're saying, but like...
Alderman Clemens, just, let's, just speak to me, and we'll...
I'm just saying, as far as the character, the character of the community, I don't see it being any different than having people who drink beer.
Alderman Maladra, floor is yours.
So, I'll start by saying my question about character had nothing to do with the character of people who drink or smoke or do anything else. So, to imply that aggravates me. A question has to do with the character of the community, the fabric of the community, and I guess it, it falls into how you slot these businesses. You cited Penrose. We could cite Penrose, we could cite the new micro winery that we... We could cite Penrose, we could cite the new micro winery that we created. Yes, we do issue liquor licenses. Most of the liquor licenses we issue come in combination with a business, a restaurant or something other than that. I don't know how many liquor licenses we've issued where 100% of their revenue is drawn from liquor. Festival of the Vine is not a celebration of booze. Festival of the Vine is a fall celebration that puts wine on the marquee, but in my opinion, it's as much about the flavor tent and the food and aspects of that. So if selling places that sell marijuana are akin to any of the restaurants that we have that serve wine, then that contributes and strengthens that type of character. If these types of businesses are like tobacco shops, vape shops, that presents another type of color to the character of the town. I've also been on the council for a long time, and in that length of time, I have heard opposition to a number of things. We talked earlier about riverboat gambling money. I actually thought there was a time when we said, no, we wouldn't take it. But to Kevin's point, we never did, but there have been times when there were a number of people who said, we shouldn't. And I'm pretty sure we passed it up more than once. Gabe brought up video gambling. Actually, gambling is going to become a growth industry as well. Sports betting is legal now. You can bet all over the place on golf tournaments. And with the betting on golf tournaments come the rise of ancillary business like stats businesses, you know, to tell you this stat, that stat, and the other stat, not necessarily because geeks like you two are into that, but it helps you know who to bet on.
That's Mr. Geek to you, Mr. Maladra.
What's that?
That's Mr. Alderman Geek.
Oh, Alderman Geek. Well, I'm in that category too, and they know that, so I didn't mean it badly. So in all of the discussion, I've not really heard how this becomes an asset to the community in any way other than money. Now, you said it's not about money. Okay, fair enough. But all of the, all of the pro arguments that I've heard have been revenue driven. And that's fine. I think that's fine. If, as a council, we're willing to stand up and say that the revenue from this use is substantial, and the effect of this use on the character of Geneva is positive or not that bad or neutral, that's all well and good. But then I get to the point that Gabe said. If any of you are thinking, yeah, we'll allow it, but we won't allow it on Third Street, then I don't think you embrace it as a part of the character quite as much as maybe, you know, you're letting on. So to my mind, I slot this in the same category as the questions that we had about video gambling, the questions that we had about 100% of our revenue being drawn from liquor sales, businesses like that. The tattoo thing was very interesting. That was a surprise to me. And in no way am I saying that people with tattoos are morally inferior, of questionable character. It's all a question of whether or not this business adds to the, adds to the fabric of Geneva, has no effect on the fabric of Geneva, or detracts from the fabric of Geneva. Lastly, I would say, we won't really be able to answer that. You were talking earlier, Alderman Swanson, about we don't know this, we don't know that, we don't know the other thing. We don't really know how this is going to play out. So we can, we can opt in and figure that we will have the wisdom to guide it to a positive result. Or we can sit back and see how it takes shape in other communities, as we did with video gambling. I've seen how that takes shape elsewhere and feel we made the right decision. That's it.
Sir.
Thank you, Mayor. To that point, potentially, maybe we would have it on Third Street. I think the, the idea that we might control visibility with zoning is just, just taking baby steps. That's, that's the go-slow approach. You know, set it aside for a while if it, if it causes no problem. Maybe we would eventually have it on Third Street. But that's, I think, you know, that's, I think something that could placate some of the, some of the public. Alderman Caven, and I thank him for bringing up the discussion of video gambling. I meant to bring that up earlier. We had a lengthy discussion of whether we should allow video gambling in the city. And we voted no. And foremost in my mind was, we had a, a list of cities that did have video gambling and cities that didn't have video gambling. And I really wanted, just by looking at the names, I really wanted to be on the list of the communities that didn't have video gambling. So by voting against that, which we did, and I did, Geneva doesn't have video gambling. So when I was challenged a couple days ago, is I'm going to use that kind of metric, wouldn't I use that metric for marijuana? The difference is that we, excuse me, that deciding one way or the other has no bearing as to whether Geneva will have marijuana, there will be marijuana in Geneva. So it's, I don't think it's an apt comparison. Thank you.
Alderman Mars? I will ask one more question.
You know, I, everybody's made great comments. I mean, but I think we're forgetting one thing. And the distinction between alcohol and this is alcohol's legal at the federal level. It's not legal. Marijuana is not legal by the US government. They have tons of rules that go against it. Tax rules and banking rules and everything. It's a tough decision. I mean, you know, I think it does call for the fabric of this, of the city, of what we really are. You know, infuser, I can see that. Processor, you know, I can see that. But dispensing, I struggle with that one, just because it, just, just because I'm just not sure how it's going to play out, more than anything else. Thank you.
I don't really have anything much to add besides, I would say I'm leaning toward the opt-in faction over there on the, on the side of the room with some pretty robust zoning discussions. So, thank you.
Alderman Swanson, then Alderman McGowan?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to point out, in response to Alderman Maladra, he mentioned that the finances, of course, are important to the city, and that's one aspect. The, the fabric of our community, of course, is another. But the one thing that you didn't mention, which is a third factor that I think we all should consider, is that by opting out, we are in no way keeping marijuana out of Geneva. And traffic, people will still be driving through, people will still have it, people will still be allowed to use it in their homes. So I think that's a very important distinction that should be considered, along with the two other points that you mentioned. Thank you.
Alderman McGowan?
Thank you. I wanted to mention something related to video gambling. I'm not totally familiar with this at all, but I think there's a financial difference with video gambling. If I'm not mistaken, there's unlimited, unlimited spending potential. So for example, if someone walked in with like $1,000 or $5,000 on their credit card, they could just sit there and gamble it all away in one sitting. Is that like an accurate assessment? With, with recreational marijuana dispensary, what is the total purchase amount allowed per visit?
It's 30 grams. And we don't, that's one of the, back to Alderman Kilburg's point, that's one of the trailer bill questions, because the 30 grams were not, they haven't identified whether that's per visit, per month, per location. But it, but right now, there is a limit of 30.
And so the average price...
If you're a resident, it's half that if you're a non-resident.
Of Illinois.
Of Illinois. The average price for 30 grams at a dispensary, maybe Mr. Ho Ho, if you're still here, you could give us an idea if you happen to know?
Yeah, if you wish to, yeah, join us here.
Yeah, no problem. That'll be about $480 if you break it all down into separate eighths, yes. If we sell bulk packaging, then you're looking at around $260 to $300. But, yeah, to speak on that topic, cultivators are now getting ready for the rollout on January 1st, and product has been cut down. We don't have any sort of bulk packaging anymore. Yep.
Crane's reported that today.
Yeah.
Another question I have is if someone wanted to go to like three different dispensaries in one evening, and they're just buying for who knows what, but they wanted to get 30 grams in Elburne and 30 grams in St. Charles, and then 30 grams somewhere else, would they be allowed to do that? Or would something kind of come up when they attempt to make the second purchase and say, no, you already purchased within 24 hours another Illinois dispensary, so you can't?
And I think that's what I just said. That's the question that remains unanswered, that they have this 30-gram limit, and unless you know otherwise, I don't know that they have clarity. The statute doesn't speak to it, but maybe the administrator proceeds to...
Yeah, so the state traceability system that we currently have in place is called BioTrack. And it does, we do have to put in everyone's patient number, QP number, as we call it. And then...
That's for the medical?
That is for medical. Now, when recreational rolls out or non-patient adult use, as we are going to call it, we are going to be scanning drivers' licenses. And so that state traceability system is going to be ready to roll out with Illinois drivers' licenses. So they will be able to track the sale. So they will be able to prohibit the sale at a second dispensary and that same thing.
Let's clarify what our friend just said. They will be able to, and they will consider prohibiting additional sales. But there's nothing in any trailer bill yet that says you can only buy a maximum of 30 grams once.
Okay. Yeah. That hasn't been handed out yet.
It's not unlike heading to the liquor stores and getting a six-pack here and a six-pack there.
Correct.
My license is scanned, but they're not calling over to, you know, wherever and saying, he's on his way.
Uh, yeah. But the, the state traceability system is supposed to be set up to do that.
But the language is not yet in place in any trailer bill.
Correct.
So, and let me also, so that you understand, the trailer bill likely would happen during the veto session, which is this fall. So that is before January 1st.
Okay. And then, I've never video gambled before, but can you use your credit card for that?
Yes, you can.
Yes? I'm hearing...
Depending on the machine, depending on the location.
I'm hearing yes. So, I mean, I just wanted to create a, you know, point out the distinction between video gambling and purchasing recreational marijuana, or, well, I'll just leave it at that. Because with video gambling, there, the ethical component there is that a government who's relying on tax revenue from video gambling is encouraging the public to just basically go into debt and like blow all their money. And there's really like no, there's no limit to that. And when you video gamble, you're enjoying the experience, however unproductive of an experience that is or whatever, but most likely, you're going to lose when you gamble. So it's putting people, it's kind of like encouraging people to take on debt or just blow their money. And with, with purchase of recreational marijuana, I see it as a consumer receiving a, you're getting a consumable, consumable good, a measurable consumable good in exchange for the money you're spending, and you're limited. Maybe not completely limited now, but it seems like it's, it's within a year, it's on the horizon, that consumers will be limited in the amount of recreational marijuana they can purchase. Another thing, something, somebody mentioned maybe riverboat money. Well, we, we are trying to secure grant money from the Riverboat Fund to redesign our kiosk, our information kiosk on the courthouse lawn on Third Street. So we do have some connection to the riverboat gambling funds. Okay, I had another comment here. Alderman Sw, sorry, Alderman Maladra, you were wondering, what is, what is the benefit to Geneva for allowing these dispensaries other than the obvious financial...
Beg your pardon?
Oh, sorry.
No, I, I was going to chime in after she completed her question.
What?
Just go ahead and address me with respect to that question about Maladra.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Okay, thank you.
So we don't have a back and forth and...
So I, I wanted to respond to something that Alderman Maladra mentioned in respect to what, what is the benefit to Geneva from allowing dispensaries other than the obvious financial benefit? Well, first of all, people who use marijuana recreationally, they, they get personal enjoyment from that. It's recreational. So there's that. And, and that's for our citizens who, or anyone who comes to visit Geneva and wishes to legally partake in the use of recreational marijuana. So that's something to be considered. And I guess maybe I have another question, and it relates to medical marijuana cards. Because I don't think that currently every single medical condition qualifies someone to receive a medical marijuana card. So there could be, and maybe Mr. Ho Ho, you could share some of your knowledge if you can on the subject, but for people who have a chronic medical ailment that is not currently in the list of defined diagnoses that qualified that person to receive a medical marijuana card, they're suffering. And they know, oh, gosh, if I could, you know, find a way to consistently get a reasonably safe product from a reliable source, then they could receive some health benefit for whatever condition that they're experiencing. So I guess, Mr. Ho Ho, if I may, can you think off the top of your head of some common, commonly known medical ailments that people have that, or health conditions where they could benefit from the use of marijuana, but they don't qualify for an Illinois medical card?
Recognizing that that question does not make you an expert?
Yeah, well, and I have to be...
You are not a medical doctor speaking with respect to any expertise.
Yeah.
Not that all medical doctors have expertise, but nevertheless...
Absolutely. And I do have to be careful on my response a little bit, due to all the HIPAA laws that I am governed by. But we do, we do see a lot of anxiety and mood disorders, sleep disorders, stuff like that, that could be on that qualifying list.
Anxiety was added to the list.
Yeah, yeah, but I know it was, but it's such a broad term, and it's, it's, yeah, it's tough. And, and I know there's a few other ones, and they're always getting added. They get added every couple months, new ones. I mean, chronic pain was just added too, so, hey. But yeah, so, I mean, there are a lot of disorders where a lot of these things are symptoms that aren't necessarily on that qualifying conditions list. But cannabis does help treat those symptoms, which then helps treat the greater disorder that they're suffering from.
Which is testimony from the patients that you serve.
Absolutely. Sleep is the number one thing we actually treat for, because people, whatever they suffer from, cancer, or, you know, chronic pain, or GI issues, Crohn's issues, it all keeps people awake at night. And that's the number one thing that people are honestly coming in to get relief for. And that is what people who don't qualify for a certain condition, if they just have insomnia or something like that, or something that keeps them up at night, this will allow them to safely walk into a dispensary, maybe talk to somebody, potentially pick up a product that could help them out, get some sleep at night. So I think that's obviously, you know, what you're getting at there.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
And I'd imagine that there are other things where a person has a short-term pain situation. Maybe they don't want to spend the money to go to a doctor or to see a specialist. Like, for example, I fell, I fell last spring here in Geneva, and I was in a lot of pain for a while. I'm better now. But, you know, that's, that's a short-term situation, a very, a very short temporary situation, where someone's experiencing, experiencing physical discomfort and stress or whatever it may be, where they could say, you know, I don't, I don't want to go through the whole thing of like having to go to the doctor, having to, to pay the fee or to see a specialist. I've got a really, you know, the person could have a really high medical deductible, for example. Then they have to pay the fee, I heard there's, there's like a fee to get a medical card, a medical marijuana card. If it's like an annual or every two or three years, whatever it is, but... Um, if it's like an annual or every two or three years, whatever it is, but there's that expense. Um, plus then they have to wait for the card to come. I imagine it doesn't just arrive overnight. And meanwhile, the person just, you know, they're, they're in need of some pain relief now. Um, so this, this is just, I'm just bringing up some examples for the benefit of the council of reasons why this is a beneficial option. I feel that, you know, marijuana has, for over a thousand years, been used by, by people on this planet for its healing qualities. So I feel that recreational marijuana is not just for college kids partying, or whatever it may be, um, or getting geared up for the next like Grateful Dead, Grateful Dead cover band. It's got so many beneficial qualities, or, sorry, beneficial uses for society, and like healing benefits. So that's another reason why I'm in favor of allowing for dispensaries, and really everything on that list there. So, thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Alderman Kilberg, good? Alderman Clements, who, by the way, was in the Barry Manilow cover band for years.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I would just like to quickly apologize if I misconstrued the character question posed by my friend and colleague from the Fifth Ward. I in no way meant to impugn his character in any way, so I do apologize for that.
Anyone else in the dais? Alderman Ruby?
Thank you. Just a, a quick point, not to state the obvious, but for, for me, the, the struggles are, there is a stigma to this, because right or wrong, this is something that has been illegal for the entire lifetime of every person in this room. So just because the state is making it legal on a said date, we don't, as humans, flip a switch and suddenly accept that, or let go of any preconceived or, you know, taught notions about the substance. Um, in addition to that, I really struggle with the youth and the fabric of Geneva. Um, those three points have me not opposed to this, but wanting to not rush into this. Um, I prefer the wait-and-see approach. Um, I'd be curious to hear, I don't know, Chief Passerelli, if you would like to speak.
For sure.
If you have any comments on the police perspective of, of this issue, I would, I would love to hear that.
I think from the police perspective, the efforts were made, you know, by the Chiefs of Police Association and Sheriff's Association to hold off on legalization. Um, it didn't happen. So like many other laws that come our way each January when the state enacts two hundred and forty-something new laws, we have to adjust, and we have to find a way to deal with it. I think the point that's been made is it will be here one way or another.
Sure.
Um, so the challenges that come with that are something that we have to learn to deal with and, and adjust to. Unlike you, I've, I've been a police officer for twenty-seven years, and it's been illegal for twenty-seven years. Um, so it's a change, for sure, but it is, it's the law, and we have to adjust, just like we do for all the other ones that come down the pipe for us.
I know this is hard to answer, but do you anticipate needing to add to our force?
I would have no idea, to be honest with you. I don't know.
I, I understand that. Well, and that's part of why I am in favor of just waiting, you know, watching what happens in our neighboring communities for six months or a year. Um, you know, if, if there's any data available that quickly, you know, it, then I would be happy to look at this again. But for now, I, I, yeah, I just really feel there's no, there's no rush. Um, I think we can just wait and see, is my, that's where my comfort zone is on the topic. So, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Alderman Ruby, is it your position to wait and see on all elements of the act, or one in particular?
Um, no, actually, I, I would propose that we, we talk about each bullet point individually. I, I was mainly referring to the dispensary.
It's, it's my sense, based on some informal notes I've made, that, well, let me say this. There's two ways to proceed this evening. We can decide amongst ourselves, and I would vote on the side of opting in at this time in order to remand this to the Plan Commission, excuse me, Plan, Planning and Zoning Commission, so that they can then host the public hearing and consider, much like our friends in St. Charles are doing now, talk about that zoning with respect to each one of these items. I hear general consensus that there is a mixture of, I like some, but not all. There's one I'm definitely opposed to, but gee, the other ones could be beneficial in terms of utilities, et cetera, et cetera. Have I misread that? Alderman Maladra?
So I agree with you, although it bothers me a little bit that I would consider allowing something to be made here that I wouldn't want to be sold here.
I was waiting for, yeah. Uh, may I, Ms. Dawkins, ask Mr. DeGroot, can I ask you a question, sir? First of all, happy birthday to your son.
Oh, thank you.
Today's his birthday?
Yes, ten.
So, and hopefully he's not watching this.
He should be in bed by now.
Okay, good.
Better be.
As, as staff liaison to the Planning and Zoning Commission, do you feel if we advanced this matter with respect to all the elements and have them ferret out exactly what is and is not in terms of zoning, based on a public hearing, a wise, or, excuse, not a wise move, but a prudent move, would they understand the charge, do you think?
I believe so. I, I think we can make it clear, walk through each one of these, I mean, each one of these uses is defined. We could identify zoning districts that they would be similar uses to. Um, and there's some buffer requirements that other communities have proposed. We can kind of map that out and see what-
Those buffer requirements referenced by the state, we can always make those stronger. Not that I'm advocating for that, but, because a couple of issues have presented themselves in other communities. If Geneva opens a dispensary, and then thirteen hundred feet away in St. Charles, they can't have one-
Correct.
Because it's too close. So it's amazing that those communities who quote "go first" almost get the lay of the land, whether it be dispensary, but I don't know if it applies to the craft grover cultivation, et cetera. I don't-
I, some communities have adopted that. They've added buffers for those uses as well, but you have that option.
And, and I'm gonna put you on the spot, so forgive me, but when do you think is the earliest we could have this before the PZC?
With notice requirements and just preparation, I would probably say the first meeting in November would be the most comfortable I'm committing to.
It would be the earliest.
And the difference between a public hearing, folks, and a public meeting is there are notice requirements for the public hearing. And that's what oftentimes adds days to the event, as opposed to, let's just call a public meeting with forty-eight hour notice.
Right.
So, anyone else wish to chime in, or anyone in the audience wish to chime in? Is there anyone who objects to what I've recommended, as eloquently as I possibly could? Alderman Kilberg?
Give a clarification as it relates to opt-in and opt-out, what it includes. What does opt-out include? Does it include everything up there?
Well, technically speaking, there is no opt-in, for all practical, if this council or this Plan Commission does not act, we're in. So really, we're being asked to consider any opting out of any of those elements. If this council feels that it's important to remain intact, all seven, and have the Plan Commission and zoning, Planning and Zoning Commission sorted out through zoning in a public hearing, then it all remains in, and we remand it to the Plan and Zoning Commission. Unless there is strong opinion at this level that we only remand to the Planning and Zoning Commission five of the seven, or four of the seven, or two of the seven.
So that's to be clarified this evening?
Uh, it's my understanding that there's comfort in forwarding it all. That's my recommendation, based on what I've heard.
Just a finer point on that. I don't think at this meeting tonight, we can get into the weeds intelligently on all of those individually.
No, and it's not our role to do so.
Right, and I, I think as, when it comes out of the PZC, is it now called? We still have veto authority. We could scratch something off of it.
Correct.
There are recommended bodies.
There's strictly a recommended body, and which was-
But we can get granular with their recommendations.
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you.
Question. Basically, I think what you're saying is, we can opt-in, but then through our process, essentially opt-out, say, you know, anything from, you know, yeah, we'll do all of these everywhere, to we won't do any of these anywhere, and everything in between, right?
Correct. And, and let's not use the word "opt-in" tonight, because we're not opting anything. We're simply advancing this discussion for the official public hearing process before the Planning and Zoning Commission. And that's when the testimony is taken. If, if it's anything like St. Charles, it'll be a full night. Or six. Alderman Bricker, and then this gentleman, Scott.
So clarification, so if we were not, if we were to leave tonight and say, we're just not gonna touch this, and come January first, someone who owns a medical dispensary in St. Charles comes before us and says, I want to cite a dispensary on Randall Road and suite, blah, 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 how would that go down? Would we not, are you saying that the state's basically said we would have to, we wouldn't-
So at, at that point, we would probably have to entertain whether it fits with any of our existing zoning regulations, as long as it's not within the fifteen hundred feet, because that's the only buffer the state provides. Um, they have some other, like, it can't be in a residential area and that things, but if it, if it remotely fits within one of our zoning districts, then it would be allowed.
A lot of communities have gone the special use route for that added layer of review. And as you know, the special use standards have to be met at the Plan Commission level prior to coming to the council. But irrespective of what happens at the Planning and Zoning Commission, we, as a committee, as a council, have the ultimate and final say.
And if I may, I would, I would echo that. Most communities have gone special use or permitted use. In other words, they say it can go anywhere, but it's a special use, so it has to go through these standards, and this is what it has to meet. Or it's a permitted use, but it's only permitted in this one area. So there, there are, just because you, just because you say, we're, we're gonna welcome and we're gonna regulate it, doesn't mean that it's kind of free rein. This, the state actually gave the locals the most, right, most authority they've ever given to regulate where these can go, and how that happens.
And of course, keep in mind that even if, you know, Mr. and Mrs. Jones want to open a dispensary, that dispensary license has to be granted by the state first. We don't issue the license. We simply hold the hearing as to whether or not to allow it in the community, should we quote "opt-in." We do not grant the licenses at all.
And then if the PZC does their process in November, and they were to come before us, or we, you know, got the recommendation in December, I mean, I, I feel like this body's split really on the dispensary, is what I feel like, is we're all, that's the, the one that's, that most people have been talking about tonight. Anyway, if PZC comes to us with a recommendation, and this body was to decide, we're just not comfortable with the dispensary portion, if we vote it down, uh, then do we have to do something to, again, opt out?
No, we can, we can surgically remove and/or add to any final recommendation the Planning and Zoning Commission makes.
So we could decide we're gonna allow for five of these uses, and we've got guidance on the books for those, and then two, we're gonna at least not move forward. Okay. All right, thank you.
Scott? Absolutely, I do.
Again, I just wanted to, one, thank the council, and I'm not sure what the appropriate vocabulary word is for the group of people here tonight, but for just even entertaining this idea and bringing it forth and allowing people like us to sit in the crowd. Um, I wouldn't have known about this, like you said, since it's not a public hearing, had it not been out on some Facebook sites and stuff like that, and I despise Facebook pretty much, too, but I'm glad I saw it. Um, I think you brought up a good point of moving it forward and then hashing it out through going bullet by bullet. And the biggest, I guess the biggest concern I've felt through everybody here is the fabric of Geneva. And your suggestion about moving it forward to get to the public hearing will, will be the best way to, to, I guess, get the pulse of the community and what they feel the fabric of the, the community is. I think it's probably a disservice to the city of Geneva to allow ten people to decide right now that it's not in the best interest of everybody in Geneva. Sorry, I'm not sure if you're eleven, maybe, on the votes, you'd be in the tiebreaker. Um, but, I mean, I think that's the best way is to get a real feel for what the community wants, is to open it up. And also, on, just a note, on the dispensary side of things, it's like, that license also costs forty thousand dollars to get. That's not something that people just like pull out of their back pocket. So it's, it's not gonna be run-of-the-mill, like, just people trying to put this stuff together. There have been dispensaries, and I think if the, the council did a case study and maybe looked at some that are already out there, either through web or sending people out there, you can see that these things aren't, they're, a lot of them are more classy than liquor stores, and it's, it's a better vibe. And the Third Street thing, you put one there, people come in, they get their gummies. I don't know what the rules are about consuming the gummies in public, but there's lots of restaurants in the area. There's lots of drinking establishments that might influence them to go out and spend that money. I'm not trying to make all the points. There's too many to be made, and like I said, I'm just glad that we're here right now, because it's about time. I've been quote-unquote "in the closet" since nineteen eighty-six. And it's, it takes more courage for me to come up here and admit that I, that I, you know, do these things, especially with my job and stuff, and employers, than it does to be one of the people that's totally against it. And it was pretty frightening for me. I, I don't have a Fitbit, but I'm probably pulsing pretty good right now, too. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, one other matter to discuss, ladies and gentlemen, and consider, is the taxation issue. It's my opinion that if we advance this matter to the Plan Commission, that we perhaps concurrently also consider whether or not to impose that three percent tax. And my reasoning on that is, I think we should have everything in order to go, should we go, as opposed to at the last minute trying to figure it out. I can't imagine anyone on this council would say yes to three of the seven, or no to five of the seven, and forget the taxation if, in fact, one of those seven happens to be a taxable business. That's my opinion. The result would be that we would impose a three percent tax on all sales.
No, 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 I get that. So we're deliberating concurrently. We can't, we can't create an ordinance that says if we decide, right?
Well?
Well, you can create an ordinance that says that any blah, 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 blah would be taxed at X. That doesn't, that doesn't say it's allowed. It's saying that it's taxed at that if that happens.
If that's created.
So you can have that on the books, even if you never had any of those establishments on the books.
Okay.
In fact, Yorkville, that's what they're doing. Yorkville is passing their sales tax ordinance, I think, actually tomorrow night, because they're hoping the tax will be moved up to January one, which the deadline for that would be October first, have it to the Department of Revenue. So they're doing that, but yet they haven't finished hashing out whether or not- I know, no pun intended, sorry. Whether or not they're actually going to-
It's a different substance.
Right. But what, they haven't, they haven't figured out yet whether or not how they're gonna, if they're going to regulate it or not. But they want to get that sales tax question out of the way, so it's on the books in case they do.
Ruby, then Clements?
So is having a dispensary and not collecting tax revenue a possibility?
Sure. This council has granted the authority to tax or not tax-
Up to.
Up to three percent on a dispenser or any other business that would generate sales, which quite frankly are not.
So would the state collect more then, if we didn't, or?
No.
No, the state's gonna collect their percentage, as is.
Okay.
But they've allowed the municipalities to add an additional tax on top of that, up to three percent in quarter cent increments.
Okay. Thank you.
Quarter percent increments.
Alderman Clements, then Caven?
Thank you, ma'am. That answered my question. I was just gonna ask if it was three percent or if it was incremental, up to three percent that we could do.
Up to three percent, yes. Alderman Caven?
I think that St. Charles did the same thing. They, they opted to go with the additional three percent, correct?
Correct.
Okay, well, if this winds up going through this whole process and we wind up having them, then I, I would definitely propose that we have the three percent tax on there so that the city generates the revenue. So, I don't know if anybody disagrees with that. I kind of doubt it, but I- So, I don't know if anybody disagrees with that, I kind of doubt it, but I...
Alderman? Stephanie, did you say we have to, if, if we want to make sure we start, if, if it all goes through for dispensing, we have to have that tax passed by when, to make sure that we collect it?
So, so the way the law's written currently, we would have to have it done by June 1st.
Okay.
What, what I was saying is, others are trying to get it done for that January 1st, but we, we won't have an application January 1, because we don't have a medical dispensary.
Okay.
So as long as we have the sales tax on the books before that June 1 deadline, we would be able to collect it September 1, assuming we had approved, regulated, any other, any dispensary or any taxing.
Okay. So you, you don't think there's a rush to put that tax in place by October 1?
I just think it's one of those things that you can get out of the way.
Okay, yeah.
So that, that, you can focus, then, on the other issues.
So would we want...
That's relatively low-hanging fruit.
Yeah, but we may not have an application on January 1, but we could have one that...
It can sit on the books with, with no application.
Right, so, but, but you, you mentioned an October 1 date, do, do we want to do that?
No, no.
Okay. That was my confusion.
We can't.
Okay, well, that was my confusion.
I mean, we could, but, but I think, I think that would, that would be...
Pushing it.
Pushing it.
Alderman Kilberg?
What's the, what's the county's role as far as the taxation piece?
None.
No, they can also tax.
Well, they can tax, they have not discussed it, as far as I know.
In other words, they could tax Geneva, or St. Charles, or Batavia, in addition to what they're going to do in rural Kane County, right?
Correct.
So in other words, if they wanted to add a 2% on top of it, is there a cap or a limit to what the county can do?
Yes. Give me one second, and I will tell you. I think it's also 3%. It's different, and, and, okay, so counties can impose a tax of up to 3% in incorporated areas, and 3.75 in sales emanating from unincorporated areas.
So, I guess my question to Kathleen would be, if in fact, this is going to be an economic boom to Geneva, what would be the economic impact if in fact, we were a tax-free zone, as it relates to a dispensing? In other words, would we attract people to Geneva because of the tax savings? I mean, obviously, if it's going to attract, this would probably attract even more people, wouldn't it?
Possibly, I've, I've not thought about it that way, but it could be, it could be, I guess.
I mean, would that be beneficial... Would that be beneficial to our Chamber of Commerce and to our businesses here in Geneva?
I, I mean, it's a, it's a pass-through tax, mostly.
My man, though, is if we, you know, if it's going to fill our restaurants, and, you know, if it's going to create sales on Third Street.
I guess I would equate it to the gas tax, so you might have one community that has a local gas tax along with a state gas tax, but if it's, if it's 20 miles away, are you going to drive the 20 miles away to save the 50 cent, the, the 2 cents per gallon, or are you going to get it?
Well, I'm saying, though, if, if St. Charles opts in, and Batavia would opt in, then I would think that those that would take advantage of a dispensing outlet would probably see that as, I mean, if we're talking about a $480 sale for, is that what you said? $480 for 30 grams? 3% on that would be significant. So, I mean, that would be something that we could give some consideration to as well at some point in time.
Alderman McGowan?
Getting back to something, I think we talked about a little earlier, too, the state of Illinois is going to take, I believe it's 20% of all the tax revenue that they collect, and they're going to use that for education, drug, like, addiction, recovery, those types of things, so...
I can't tell you exactly.
Yeah, what do you have?
Okay, so, all funds received by the Illinois Department of Revenue will be paid into the Cannabis Regulation Fund, and then monthly, those revenues will go first to pay for direct and indirect costs associated with implementation, administration, and enforcement of the Compassionate Use Medical Cannabis Program Act and the Cannabis Regulation and Tax Act, and it goes on a little bit, but then second, after that's happened, 35% gets transferred to the State General Revenue Fund, 25% is transferred to the Criminal Justice Information Projects Fund to support the Restore, Reinvest, and Renew Program for Community Reinvestment, 20% is transferred to the Illinois Department of Human Services Community Services Fund to fund mental health and substance abuse services at local health departments, 10% is transferred to the Budget Stabilization Fund to pay for the backlog of unpaid state bills, 8% is transferred to the Local Government Distributed Fund to fund crime prevention programs, training, and interdiction efforts relating to the illegal cannabis market and cannabis-based DUIs, and 2% is transferred to the Drug Treatment Fund for public education and awareness.
Thank you. Actually, I have that right here in this pamphlet that someone forwarded to me. So if we also wanted to, we could designate a, a portion of our, let's say, 3% tax that we impose to a special fund, be it the Geneva Mental Health Board, or some other type of, maybe to, I don't know, District 304, for their drug awareness and education outreach program to students and families, and anything, anything related to that. Is that an option for the city?
I don't know all the specifics, but yes, essentially, the city can, can restrict those funds, however, the council as a whole deems appropriate.
And without any, like, restrictions, would, would those funds just by default go into the general fund?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I had something else, but I forgot, if I remember, I'll let you know.
Anyone else in the dais? Are we clear on the direction being taken tonight? No formal votes being taken, but there seems to be consensus on advancing this matter to the Planning and Zoning Commission, for them to ferret out exactly what should presumably remain. Also, we are directing City Administrator Dawkins to prepare a document for consideration of implementing the up-to 3% tax. Anyone else? Last chance for questions or comments. The chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Marx, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, folks, thank you very much.